Okay, calling to order the Joint Committee on Commerce and Consumer Protection and the Committee on Ways and Means for Decision Making. This is the nine thirty agenda. These measures are being streamlined on YouTube. In the event we have to end early due to technical difficulties, the committee will reconvene to discuss any outstanding business on Thursday, March second, ten oh five in this room. On public notice will be posted on our website. Today's agendas are for decision making. If you're interested in reviewing the written testimony, please go to the legislature's website. You will find the link on our, on the status page for each measure. Okay, first item SB ten thirty-five, recommendation is to pass with amendments effective date to twenty fifty. Any discussion?
Okay, recommendation, uh, ten thirty-five, many draft ones, ask what amendments? Senator Cruz, both sides, Vice Chair, both sides, Senator Pino.
Aye.
Senator De Coy.
Aye.
Senator Inoue.
Aye.
Senator Canoja.
Aye.
Senator Kidani.
Aye.
Senator Kim.
Aye.
Senator Lee.
Aye.
Senator Marawaki.
Aye.
Senator Wakai.
Yes.
Senator Fegola.
Aye.
And one execute, recommendation adopted.
Thank you.
Oh, for CPN, same recommendation, passing with amendments, their votes, aye.
Thank you, Vice Chair of all sides, Senator McKelvey.
Yes.
Senator Richards.
Aye.
Senator Awa.
Aye.
Measures adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you, next item SB ten thirty-five, recommendation is to pass with amendments, adopt LRB tech amendments. Oh, shoot, I might hear you mix up. Whatever. No, I know, it was in the Marawaki, that's right. Okay. Yeah. Let's see, I don't think there's something.
What's going on?
Oh, there's a vote? We just read. Okay, you know what, we're gonna reconsider, um, action on SB ten thirty-five. Um, the recommendation is to reconsider and pass with amendments, adopt LRB tech amendments, and amend to include a two-year sunset. Any discussion? If not, triplets.
Okay, with twelve members present, any reservations for WAM, any objection, recommendation adopted?
Okay, for CPN, same recommendation on the reconsideration, chair votes, aye.
Thank you, any reservations or objections hearing none, so ordered.
Okay, next item SB four five nine, recommendation is to pass with amendments, uh, defect the date to twenty fifty. Any discussion? Not triplets.
Okay, with twelve members present, winning reservations, any objections from WAM? Or recommendations adopted?
Uh, for CPN committee, same recommendation, chair votes, aye.
Thank you, for CPN members present, any reservations with or objections? Okay, thank you, Senator Awa, measure is adopted.
Okay, next measure on the agenda is, uh, the following measures are CPN lead. Uh, the first measure is SB fifteen, SD one relating to vessels. Uh, after reviewing the testimony, um, considering that there is no submitted testimony and support, the recommendation is to defer. Next measure is SB four sixty-three, SD one, relating to property development. Uh, recommendation is to pass this measure out with technical non-substantive amendments, any discussion? Seeing on, uh, Vice Chair, passing with amendments, chair votes, aye.
Thank you, Vice Chair of all sides, Senator McKelvey.
Yes.
Senator Richards.
Aye.
Uh, Senator Awa.
Aye.
Ways and Means, same recommendation, chair votes, aye.
Okay, with twelve members present, any reservations, in the opposition, recommendation adopted?
Thank you very much, next measure is SB six oh nine, SD one relating to hearing aids. The recommendation is to pass this measure unamended. Uh, discussion, seeing on Vice Chair, passing unamended, chair votes, aye.
Thank you, Vice Chair of all sides, any reservations or objections from the remaining CPN members, hearing none, measures adopted.
Ways and Means, same recommendation.
Okay, with twelve members present, any reservation, in the opposition, recommendation adopted?
Thank you very much, next measure is SB six eighty-two relating to animal fur products. Recommendation is to adopt the amendments proposed by the Attorney General's Office, defect the effective date to July one, twenty fifty. Any questions or concern? Seeing on Vice Chair, SB six eighty-two, passing with amendments, chair votes, aye.
Thank you, Vice Chair of all sides, of the members present, any reservations or objection?
No.
I'm sorry, thank you, Senator Awa.
Ways and Means, same recommendation.
Okay, with twelve members present, any reservations, in the opposition, recommendation adopted?
Thank you very much, next measure is SB seven eighty-one, uh, SD one relating to renewable energy. Uh, the recommendation on this measure is to strike sections three and four of the measure and adopt the HSEA proposed amendments that relate to investor-owned utilities, any discussion? Seeing on Vice Chair, passing with amendments, chair votes, aye.
Thank you, Vice Chair of all sides, of the CPN members present, any reservations or objections? Hearing none, so ordered.
Ways and Means, same recommendation, any discussion?
Okay, with twelve members present, any reservations, any opposition, recommendation adopted?
Thank you very much, next measure is SB eight thirty-nine, SD one relating to renewable energy. Recommendation is to blank out the appropriation amount in the measure defective effective date to July one, twenty fifty. Uh, change references to Hawaiian Electric to investor-owned utilities. And, uh, there are also some technical non-substantive amendments, any discussion? Seeing on Vice Chair, passing with amendments, chair votes, aye.
Thank you, um, of the CPN members present, any reservations or objections? Hearing none, so ordered.
Ways and Means, same recommendation, any discussion?
Okay, with twelve members present, any reservations? In the opposition, recommendation adopted?
Thank you very much, next measure is SB eleven fifty-four, SB one relating to energy. But the recommendation on this measure is to defect the effective date to July one, twenty fifty. And also adopt the suggested amendments from the IBW twelve sixty as it pertains to the PUC docket criteria. Except that we will make the recommendations discretionary rather than mandatory, any discussion? Seeing on Vice Chair, passing with amendments, chair votes, aye.
Thank you, of the CPN members present, any reservations or objections, hearing none, so ordered.
Same recommendation for Ways and Means, any discussion?
Okay, with twelve members present, any reservations? In the opposition, recommendation adopted?
Thank you very much, next measure SB twelve sixty-four. We get some feedback, can someone mute there? Okay, next measure SB twelve sixty-four, SD one relating to commercial fishing. Recommendation is to pass this measure with amendments, adopting the deal in our amendments, any discussion? Uh, seeing on Vice Chair, passing with amendments, chair votes, aye.
Thank you, Vice Chair also votes, aye, of the CPN members present, any reservations or objections, hearing none, so ordered.
Same recommendation for Ways and Means, any discussion?
Okay, with twelve members present, any reservations? Any opposition, recommendation adopted?
Thank you very much, next measure is SB two eighty-seven, SD one relating to agricultural districts. Recommendation is to pass this measure unamended, any discussion? Seeing on Vice Chair, passing as is, chair votes, aye.
Thank you, the CPN members present, any objections or reservations?
No.
Thank you, Senator Awa, measure is adopted.
Same recommendation for Ways and Means, any discussion?
Okay, with twelve members present, any reservations? Any opposition, recommendation adopted?
Thank you very much, next measure is SB three eighty-nine relating to equity. Recommendation on this measure is to pass with amendments, defecting the effective date to July one, twenty fifty, any discussions? Seeing on Vice Chair, passing with amendments, chair votes, aye.
Okay, Vice Chair also votes, aye, of the CPN members present, any objections or reservations, hearing none, so ordered.
Same recommendation for Ways and Means, any discussion?
Okay, with twelve members present, any reservations? In the opposition, recommendation adopted?
Thank you very much, next measure SB six ninety-three, SD one relating to pharmacists. Recommendation on this measure is to pass unamended, any discussion? Seeing on Vice Chair, passing unamended, chair votes, aye.
Okay, of the CPN members present, any reservations, objections, hearing none? All in the affirmative, thank you.
Same recommendation for Ways and Means, any discussion?
With twelve members present, any reservation? Any opposition, recommendation adopted?
Thank you very much, next measure is SB sixty-three, SD one relating to nurses. The recommendation on this measure is to pass with technical amendments, any discussion? Seeing on Vice Chair, SB sixty-three, SD one, passing with amendments, chair votes, aye.
Thank you, of the CPN members present, any objections or reservations?
No.
Thank you, Senator Awa, measure is adopted.
Same recommendation for Ways and Means, any discussion?
Okay, with twelve members present, any reservations? Any opposition, recommendation adopted?
Thank you very much, next measure SB three nineteen, SD one relating to recognition of emergency medical services personnel licensure interstate compact. Recommendation is to pass this measure unamended, any discussion? Seeing on, uh, Vice Chair, uh, passing unamended, chair votes, aye.
Okay, of the CPN members present, any reservations or objections, no vote for Senator Awa? Okay, any others? Okay, four in the affirmative, one no vote, measure is adopted.
Same recommendation for Ways and Means, any discussion?
Okay, with twelve members present, any reservations? In the opposition, recommendation adopted?
Thank you very much, next measure SB three twenty, SD one relating to psychology interjurisdictional compact. Recommendation, the recommendation is to pass this measure unamended, any discussion? Seeing on Vice Chair, uh, chair votes, aye.
Okay, of the CPN members present, any reservations or objections, Senator Awa, your voting, no, thank you.
Same recommendation for Ways and Means, any discussion?
Okay, with twelve members present, any reservations, any oppositions? Recommendation, we're done.
Thank you very much, here, next measure is SB three twenty-one, SD one relating to APR income compact. The recommendation is to pass this measure unamended, any discussion? Uh, seeing none, passing unamended, chair votes, aye.
Okay, for CPN members present, any reservations or objections, noting Senator Awa's objection?
No, yeah.
Thank you.
Same recommendation for Ways and Means, any discussion?
Okay, with twelve members present, any reservation? Any other reservations? Any opposition, recommendation adopted?
Thank you very much, next measure is SB six eight nine, SD one relating to cannabis. The recommendation is to defer decision-making on this measure to tomorrow, March second, in this room to eleven at nine fifty AM. The next measure is SB fourteen seventy-three, SD one relating to health. The recommendation on this measure is to defect the effective date to July one, twenty fifty, any discussion? Seeing none, passing with amendments, chair votes, aye.
Thank you, of the CPN members present, any reservations or objections? Hearing none, measure is adopted.
Same recommendation for Ways and Means, any discussion?
Okay, twelve members present, any reservation? In the opposition, recommendation adopted?
Thank you very much, the last measure on this agenda is SB sixteen fifteen, SD one relating to the Department of Health. Recommendation on this measure, uh, excuse me, is to pass with amendments, will defect the effective date to July one, twenty fifty. There are also some technical non-substantive amendments, any discussion? Okay, seeing then Vice Chair, passing with amendments, chair votes, aye.
Thank you, of CPN members present, any reservations, objections, hearing none, measure is adopted.
Same recommendation for Ways and Means, any discussion?
Okay, with all members present, any reservation? Any opposition, recommendations, adopted?
Uh, thank you very much, that concludes our agenda, members, please stand by for three minutes for the next agenda, we're adjourned.
Okay, calling to order the Ways and Means Committee with the nine forty, uh, decision-making agenda. Okay, first item. Recite.
Good morning, calling to order the nine fifty AM, March first, uh, CPN Ways and Means Agenda. This is for decision-making on one measure, SB six seventy-four, SD one relating to the Interstate Medical Licenseure Compact. Uh, the recommendation on this measure is to pass unamended, any discussion? Seeing on Vice Chair, passing as is, chair votes, aye.
Thank you, of the CPN members present, any reservations, objections?
No.
Okay, thank you, measures, uh, adopted.
Ways and Means, same recommendation, any discussion?
With all Ways and Means members present, any reservations? In the opposition, recommendation adopted?
Thank you very much, we're adjourned.
Okay, going back into the nine forty agenda. Okay, so first item is SB twelve thirty-seven, we're gonna defer to, uh, tomorrow, March third, ten oh five in this room. My second, my second. If not, it will die, you know, if we make mistake, it will die. Okay. Next item SB eight two four, recommendation is to pass with amendments, adopt LRB tech amendments. And to address the constitutional concerns raised by the AG, amend page two, line thirteen, to read, "The sec- the securing of mooring lines from vessels requiring tug assistance to commercial docks, wharves, piers, quays, and landings shall be performed by an operational stevedoring company that is currently operating in the state with an excluded exemption for all cases related to shipyard, boatyard operations necessary for vessel, vessel dock drying, hauling, launching, and/or shipping using conjunction with the shipyard's boatyard operations." On page two, nine twenty, to read, "The department shall have the authority to regulate labor required to provide stevedoring services for the securing of mooring lines from vessels requiring tug assistance to commercial docks, wharves, piers, quays, and landings be performed by an operational stevedoring company that is currently operating in the state." Amend the definition of tug to read a boat used for towing or pushing of a larger vessel and add a definition for boatyard, shipyard, boatyard, and defect the date to twenty fifty. Any discussion? Not triplets.
Any recommendations, pass with amendment, Senator Alexsoni, Vice Chair votes, aye, Senator Pino.
Aye.
Decoy.
Aye.
Inoue.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Kidani.
Aye.
Kim.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Marawaki.
Aye.
Senator Bakura.
Aye.
Wakai.
Yes.
Povella.
Aye.
Measures adopted.
Thank you, next item, Senate Bill nine seventy-four, recommendation is to pass with amendments, adopt LRB tech amendments, and amend to exclude the National Insurance Crime Bureau. Any discussion? The chair votes, aye.
Okay, with all members present, any reservations? In the opposition, recommendation adopted?
Thank you, next item, uh, we're deferring to tomorrow, March second, ten oh five, in this room. Next item, Senate Bill fifteen eleven, uh, recommendation is to pass with amendments, adopt LRB tech amendments. And amend to include on page five, lines three to six, "Encouraging and aiding in the education and training of persons that conduct training, investigations, research, and study for individuals engaged in the conduct of research." On page five, line ten, "Assisting in the dissemination of knowledge from research studies, establishing staff positions, fellowships, scholarships, publications, and lectures." And change in which to, to include on page fifteen, line fifteen, and defect the date to twenty fifty. Any discussion?
Yeah, technically, where are we considering?
Recite. Okay, reconvene, okay, just in the abundance of caution, um, motion is to reconsider previous action into pass with amendments, uh, which I already outlined, any discussion? Not triplets.
Okay, with all members present, any reservation? Any opposition, recommendation adopted?
Next item SB fifteen twenty-two, recommendation is to pass with amendments, adopt LRB tech amendments. Dissolve HTA and transfer new, new duties to a newly established tax agency governed by a new board. Revise definitions that pertain to the operations of the new agency. Outline responsibilities, personnel, and organizational structure for the new agency. Specify that the appropriation in section, section nineteen is in part to fund positions of the new agency and remove sections twenty, the convention center enterprise special fund deposit, and twenty-two, the executive director's position and salary. And, uh, the board is defined as nine members, uh, one from each county, so four, and then five at large. Any discussion? Not triplets.
Okay, with all members present, any reservation?
Reservations?
Yes, reservations for Senator Inoue, Senator Canuha. Anyone else? Any opposition? Recommendations adopted?
Thank you, next item SB five twenty, recommendation is to pass with amendments, adopt LRB tech amendments. And per AG's testimony, amend to replace for the purposes of this act on page three with, for the purposes of Act three oh four, session laws of Hawaii, twenty twenty-two. amend to move the program to Leeward Community College and include a blank appropriation with four FDAs to Leeward Community College and affect the date to twenty fifty. Any discussion?
Okay, with all members present, any reservation? Any opposition, recommendations, adopt?
HR, you might wanna get on the, on the, um, yeah, on the conference. Okay, next item SB seven twenty-five. Uh, we're gonna defer to tomorrow, March second, ten oh five in this room. Next item, SB nine forty-one, recommendation is to pass with amendments. Adopt LRB tech amendments and include to an appro- include, amend to include a total appropriation of one hundred eighty-five million broken out by the following projects. Uh, sixty-five million for teacher housing at Millani High School, sixty million for teacher housing at Waipahu High School, and sixty million for teacher housing at Nanakuli High School. And amend the appropriation for, to allow for how, housing and classroom construction where applicable, uh, defect the date to twenty fifty. Any discussion? Not triplets.
Okay, with all members present, any reservation? Any opposition, recommendation adopted?
Thank you, next item SB eleven fifty-three, recommendation is to pass with amendments, adopt LRB tech amendments, any discussion?
Okay, with all thirteen members present, any reservations? Any opposition, recommendations, adopted?
Thank you, next item SB fourteen thirteen, recommendation is to pass with amendments, adopt LRB tech amendments, effective date to twenty fifty. Any discussion? Not triplets.
Okay, with all members present, any reservation?
No.
Any opposition? Recommendations adopted?
Thank you, and we have, uh, two more agendas, one at ten oh five with JDC, and one at ten ten, uh, just Ways and Means. Okay, calling the or, the, to order the Joint Committee on Judiciary and Ways and Means for Decision Making, this is the ten oh five agenda. First item is SB two eleven, recommendation is to pass with amendments, adopting LRB tech amendments, any discussion? Not triplets.
Recommendation to pass with amendments, chair votes, aye, Vice Chair votes, aye, Senator Pino.
Aye.
Senator Decoy.
Aye.
Senator Inoue.
Aye.
Senator Canuha.
Aye.
Senator Kidani.
Aye.
Senator Kim.
Aye.
Senator Lee.
Aye.
Senator Marawaki.
Aye.
Senator Bakura.
Aye.
Senator Wakai.
Yes.
Senator Povella.
No.
Your recommendation adopted?
Same recommendation, recommendation for JDC, questions or concerns? If not, Vice Chair.
Recommendations to pass SB two eight? Yeah. Amendments for JDC, Chair Rhodes.
Aye.
Vice Chair votes, aye, Senator Eli Fonte.
Aye.
Senator Samuel Ventura.
Aye.
Senator Awa.
No.
Measure passes. Thank you. Yeah, SB, uh, three hundred, recommendation is gonna be to pass with amendments. We're gonna take from Dylanar's testimony to examine certain projects with the purpose, purposes of natural and cultural resource management. And we, we'll try to add some language that includes an easement when, um, using state dollars for grants. Any discussion? Not triplets.
Okay, with all members present, any reservations?
Reservations.
Any opposition? Recommendations adopted?
For JDC, same recommendation, and questions or concerns, seeing on Vice Chair.
Uh, for JDC, members present, any reservations or no votes? Hearing none, the measure passes.
Okay, for SB forty-four relating to state water code penalties, adds a minimum penalty of fifty dollars per violation of the state water code. Raises the maximum penalty to twenty-five thousand, uh, recommendation here is, oh, okay.
And, two positions.
Uh, we'll make, uh, we'll pass with some amendments, who add two positions on the Mission Commission on Water Resource Management per their request, and we have a blank appropriation. And I believe it has a bad day already, yes, has a bad day already. Questions, concerns? If not, Vice Chair, with amendments.
Recommendation for SB forty-four with amendments, for JDC, with members present, any no votes, reservations? Hearing none, the measure passes. Same recommendation for Ways and Means, any discussion?
With all members present, any reservations? Any opposition, or recommendations, adopted?
Thank you, next up is SB three oh six, requires all state agencies adopting, amending, or repealing a rule to make the full text of the rules of the agency available on the office of a Lieutenant Governor's internet website. Uh, recommendation here is to, noting it, the first effective date already, uh, pass as is. Questions, okay? Again, okay, questions or concerns? If not, Vice Chair.
For JDC, SB three oh six, the pass amended, there are any no votes or reservations? Hearing none, the measure passes. Same recommendation for Ways and Means, any discussion?
Okay, with all members present, any reservation? Any opposition, recommendations, adopted?
Okay, thank you, next up is SB three seventy-five relating to cannabis, cannabis establishes the Hawaii cannabis authority within the Department of Health adopt rules to regulate responsible dog use of cannabis in the state.
Yeah.
Uh, after conferring with the Chair, Dela Cruz. Uh, after conferring with the Chair, Dela Cruz, we're going to defer this measure and there are other cannabis measures that are still alive, so that one's deferred. SB five oh seven relating to wetland preservations adds definitions for floodway, natural stormwater infrastructure and wetlands to section three forty-three dash two requires a proposed housing project of the Hawaii Housing Finance Development Corporation that is exempt from all statutes. To ensure that it does not impact wetlands and natural stormwater infrastructure. Recommendation here is well, okay. Personally, I need prior concurrence from a sitting next to me. Are you okay with? Yeah, okay. Now, we'll change the effective date to March twenty-two, twenty seventy-five. We'll add a provision that specifies that the act's definition of wetlands shall not apply to the word wetlands as used in HRS chapter three forty-two D, which is proposed by DOH, rather than providing that HHFDC projects should not have any impact on wetlands or natural stormwater infrastructure, instead provide that HHFDC projects shall not have a significant adverse impact on wetlands or natural stormwater infrastructure. Questions, concerns? If not, vice chair.
Recommendations to pass SB five oh seven, JDC with amendments. Members present, any no votes or reservations? Hearing down the measure passes.
Same recommendation for ways and means.
With all members present in reservations? Reservations? Any opposition? Recommendations about?
Okay, thank you. Moving on to SB thirteen eighty-four relating to workforce development, makes a number change to the workforce development statute. Recommendation on thirteen eighty-four is to uh, we accept AG's technical and clarifying amendments and those other technical amendments and note that there's already a deferred effective date. Questions or concerns? If not, vice chair.
JDC on that because before, we've been having so maybe no vote.
No vote.
You were presented a lot. Measure passes.
Same recommendation for ways and means, any discussion?
Okay, with all members present, any reservations? Reservations? Any opposition? Recommendations about?
Okay, let's conclude our business war, John.
Okay, calling to order the ten ten, ways and means decision making. First item is SB thirty-five. Recommendation is to pass with amendments, make the appropriation, defect date to twenty fifty. Any discussion?
Okay, with all members present, any reservations? Any opposition? Recommendations about?
Thank you. Next item, SB sixty-two, recommendation is to pass with amendments per the AG. And I think the University of Hawaii amend the appropriation section to read, there's appropriate out of the Hawaii Medical Educational Special Fund, the sum of we'll put a blank amount or so much thereof as may be necessary for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. For graduate medical education and training programs established under chapter three oh four AHRS. The sum appropriated shall be expended by University of Hawaii at Manoa John Avery School of Medicine for the purposes of the, of this act and effective date to twenty fifty. Any discussion? Not cheerful side.
Okay, with all members present in reservations? Any opposition or recommendations about?
Thank you. Next item, SB one, one sixty-three. Recommendation is to pass as is.
With all members present in reservations? Any opposition or recommendations?
Thank you. Next item, SB one ninety-three. Recommendation is to pass with amendments, adopt LRB tech commitments. Any discussion?
Okay, with all members present in reservation, any opposition? Recommendation about?
Thank you. Next item, SB two thirty-nine, recommendation is to pass with amendments, adopt LRB tech amendments. And per DHS to better effectuate the amendments made in a previous committee, amend to include the language or an accrediting organization approved by the Director of Human Services on page three, line sixteen through twenty-one and page four, lines three to seven. And per the Attorney General, amend to remove the following language in section five of the measure that reads, "The sums appropriated shall be dispersed and expended by the Department of Human Services toward grants to private childcare providers participating in the childcare accreditation program established pursuant to section two of this act for the purposes set forth in section two of this act without regard to sections three forty-six dash one eighty-three in HRS." And insert the following language to read, there is appropriate out of the child care grant program special fund, the sum of blank appropriation or so much thereof as may be necessary for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. And the same sum or so much thereof as may be necessary for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five to be distributed and expended by the Department of Human Services toward grants to provide childcare providers participating in the childcare accreditation program established pursuant to section two of this act for the purposes set forth in section two of this act without regard to sections three forty-six dash one eighty-three HRS. Any discussion? Not cheerful side.
Okay, with all members present in reservation, any opposition? Recommendation about?
Thank you. Next item. SB two sixty-two, recommendation is fast with amendments, effective date to twenty fifty. Any discussion?
With all members present in reservation, any opposition? Recommendation about?
Thank you. Next item, SB three ninety-three, recommendation is to pass as is.
With all members present in reservation, any opposition? Recommendation about?
Thank you. Next item. SB four sixty-seven, recommendation is to pass as is.
With all members present in reservations? Any opposition? Recommendation about?
Thank you. Next item, SB four eighty-one, recommendation. Okay, you know, we're gonna defer this to tomorrow, March second, ten oh five in this room. Next item, SB four eighty-five, recommendation is to pass with amendments, effective date to twenty fifty.
With all members present in reservations, any opposition or recommendation about?
Next item. SB recess. Okay, SB four eighty-six, we convening. Okay, we're going to defer and hopefully we can come up, we can find a bill that's that can also include all three branches of government. Next item, SB four ninety-four, recommendation is to pass with amendments, adopt LRB tech amendments. Any discussion?
With all members present in reservations, any opposition? Recommendation about?
Thank you. Next item, SB six oh six. Uh, we're going to defer till tomorrow, March second, uh, is it? What time is it tomorrow? Ten oh five? Ten oh five in this room. The recess. And next item, SB eight eleven. Recommendation is to pass with amendments, adopt LRB tech amendments.
Okay, with all members present in reservations, any opposition? Recommendation about?
Thank you. Next item, SB eight thirteen, recommendation is to pass with amendments, adopt LRB tech amendments, effective date to twenty fifty. Any discussion?
And with all members present in reservations, any opposition? Recommendation about?
Eight thirteen, any discussion?
Eight fourteen.
Next item, SB eight fourteen, recommendation is to pass with amendments, adopt LRB tech amendments, make the appropriation. Any discussion?
Okay, with all members present in reservations, any opposition? Recommendation about?
Thank you. Next item, SB eight fifty-three, recommendation is to pass with amendments. Uh, oh, excuse me, recommendation is to pass as is. Any discussion?
With all members present in reservation, any opposition? Recommendation about?
Thank you. Next item, SB eight eighty-four, recommendation is to pass as is. Any discussion?
With all members present in reservations, any opposition? Recommendation about?
Thank you. Next item, SB nine forty-five, recommendation is to pass with amendments, adopt LRB tech amendments, make the appropriation.
With all members present in reservations? Any opposition? Recommendation about?
Okay, next item, SB nine fifty-nine, we're gonna be deferring. Next item, SB nine sixty-eight, recommendation is to pass with amendments, adopt LRB tech amendments. Any discussion?
Okay, with all members present in reservations? Any opposition? Recommendation about?
Thank you. Next item, SB nine seventy-one, recommendation is to pass with amendments, adopt LRB tech amendments, effective date to twenty fifty.
With all members present in reservation, any opposition? Recommendation about?
Thank you. Next item, SB nine ninety-two, recommendations, pass with amendments, effective date to twenty fifty.
With all members present in reservations, any opposition or recommendation about?
Thank you. Next item, SB ten oh five, recommendation is to pass with amendments, adopt LRB tech amendments, effective date to twenty fifty. Any discussion?
Okay, with all members present in reservations, any opposition? Recommendation about?
Thank you. Next item, SB ten seven to eight. Recommendation is to pass with amendments, make the appropriation, include one permanent project specialist position and effective date to twenty fifty.
Okay, with all members present in reservation? Any opposition? Any recommendations about?
Recede. Very convening. SB ten ninety-one, recommendation is to pass with amendments, adopt LRB tech amendments, effective date to twenty fifty.
Okay, with all members present in reservation, any opposition? Recommendation about?
Thank you. Next item, SB eleven thirty-nine, recommendation is to pass with amendments, effective date to twenty fifty. Any discussion?
Okay, with all members present in reservation, any opposition? Recommendation about?
Thank you. Next item, eleven sixty-seven, recommendation is to pass as is. Any discussion?
With all members present in reservation, any opposition?
No vote for me.
Any recommendations about?
Thank you. Next item, SB twelve fifteen, recommendation is to pass with amendments, adopt LRB tech amendments. Any discussion?
With all members present in reservations, any opposition? Recommendation about?
Thank you. Next item, SB twelve thirty-two, recommendation is passed with amendments, adopt LRB tech amendments. And to amend to exempt concession contracts from sections one of two dash fourteen per, uh, what is that, the library system? And further amend to include a five-year sunset, effective date to twenty fifty. Any discussion?
Okay, with all members present in reservations, any opposition? Recommendation about?
Thank you. Next item, SB twelve forty-seven, recommendation is to pass with amendments, effective date to twenty fifty. Any discussion?
Okay, with all members present in reservations? Any opposition? Recommendation about?
Thank you. Next item, SB thirteen fifty-two, recommendation. Oh, excuse me, we'll be deferring this item to March second, ten oh five in this room. Next item, SB fourteen fifteen, recommendation is to pass with amendments, adopt LRB tech amendments. Any discussion?
With all members present in reservation, any opposition? Recommendation about?
Thank you. Next item, SB fourteen sixteen, recommendation is to pass with amendments, adopt LRB tech amendments.
Okay, with all members present in reservations? Any opposition? Recommendation about?
Thank you. Next item, SB fourteen sixty-five, recommendation is to pass with amendments, adopt LRB tech amendments. Any discussion?
Okay, with all members present? Any reservations? Any opposition? Recommendation about?
Thank you. Next item, for SB fourteen seventy, recommendation is to pass with amendments, adopt LRB tech amendments, make the appropriation, effective date to twenty fifty. Any discussion?
Okay, with all members present in reservation, any opposition? Recommendation about?
Thank you. Next item, SB fourteen seventy-four, recommendation is passed with amendments, adopt LRB tech amendments, effective date to twenty fifty. Any discussion?
Okay, with all members present in reservation, any opposition? Recommendation about?
Thank you. Next item, SB fifteen oh nine, recommendation is to pass with amendments per DAGs and UH, amend page three, line two to read "For the preservation of and long-term access to government records and other materials preserved at the state archives." Any discussion? Not cheerful side.
Okay, with all members present in reservation, any opposition? Recommendation about?
Thank you. Next item, SB fifteen twenty-seven, recommendation is to pass with amendments, adopt LRB tech amendments and per Department of Law Enforcement, amend to allow the department to contract certain services and effective date to twenty fifty. Any discussion?
Okay, with all members present in reservations, any opposition? Recommendation about?
Thank you. Next item, SB fifteen seventy-three, recommendation is to pass with amendments, adopt LRB tech amendments. Any discussion?
With all members present in reservations, any opposition? Recommendation about?
Thank you. Recede. We convening. Okay, going back to SB eighteen eighty-six, recommendation is to pass with amendments, affect the date to twenty fifty. Any discussion? Thank you, members.